Do I have a motion to open the February 6, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Michelle, oh, Brian, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulholland-McGee.
Dennis D'Alonso?
Here.
Samantha DeBurg.
Last year, we know Puccio.
Here.
Here.
Amy Ward.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session for the following purposes to discuss a teacher and contractual matters?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, we are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the Wednesday, up Monday, February 6, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulholland-McGee.
Here.
Dennis D'Alonso?
Here.
Samantha DeBurg?
Here.
Last year, we know Puccio.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.
Here.
Amy Wolverton?
Here.
Please note, fire Harrison's board, please. Drop the other.
Thank you, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, may do so, but it doesn't appear that we have anyone in attendance this evening. So moving on to exciting news within our community, in regards to our art department, the following students won the Scholastic Art Awards. Now, in its 100th year, the Scholastic Arts celebrate excellence in art and writing created by American high schoolers, and their work is evaluated for originality, skill, demonstration, and voice emergence, and the foremost leaders in the visual and literary arts evaluate their work. So we're very proud to announce that five of our Harrison High School students received this prestigious recognition. Diego Abad, City for Silver Key. Alexis Alfaro, Investing in Yourself was an honorable mention. Gianna Allegretti, How Can I Fix This?, another honorable mention. Ezra Burgout, Self Portrait, Silver Key Award. Jane Alcori, The Game of Life, an honorable mention. So congratulations to all of our excellent artists.
And I think these pieces are actually, you can view them on our website. They are stunning. I saw them all, they really are breathtaking, amazing talent.
It's also really exciting in regards to the arts. Last week, we had the entire 5th grade of all four elementary schools headed into the city to the New York Philharmonic, young people's concerts for this school's series, and Dr. Tanaka Suwan arranged for our students to participate in the Q and A, and it was just wonderful for the kids to finally, after years of not having something as simple as a field trip, to have such culture and art in the city, and I know it was, the children really enjoyed it, so.
And Mr. Courtwright won, I guess there was sticks to be drawn, so he was the elementary principal who got to go on the trip, he had a great time.
Yeah, I heard it was a wonderful event.
Everybody loved it.
Yeah. The Harrison Science Research had a great showing at the Westchester Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. Congratulations to Ariel Blackman, first place Plant, Earth, and Environmental Sciences. Lauren Davidson, first place for Medicine and Health. Lauren Schnapp, third place Medicine and Health. Zainab Faisal, fifth place Animal Science. And Ariel Blackman and Lauren Davidson will compete in the Upstate Speaker Competition. Lauren Schnapp will compete in the poster competitions in Albany in March, March 8th and 9th. We had members of the Harrison High School Symphonic Winds and Symphonic Strains visited LMK to perform and play with the 8th grade band and orchestra. It was super meaningful for everyone involved, and it's just a big part of the district's transition program for everyone to see what they get to look forward to moving up into the high school. We had a very exciting last week college signing. Nick Reed signed his National Letter of Intent to play football at the University of Buffalo and continue his academic and athletic career. We're very proud of his accomplishments, and I was honored to attend, and the amount of students and friends and teammates that were present for such an important day in Nick's high school and athletic career was just, it was really special. So congratulations for your success.
And I think you revealed that Nick is actually known in your household.
Nick is known, people that are not even in the high school are, I made a comment about the high school kicker, the football kicker, and my daughter was like, oh, Nick Reed, yeah, I know who that, I didn't even say his name, so yes, it was really cute. The girls varsity basketball team defeated Fox Lane in the Dabber McDonald Classic 66 to 26. The team had strong contributions from all of their players. The girls head into the final week of their regular season before heading into the playoffs. They also, on senior night, defeated Ry 57-37, and they defeated Pelham as well 51-42. Mia Strazza with 28 points. Olivia Fernandez had seven, 14 rebounds, and seven assists. So congratulations to these girls, they're having a solid.
I just want to say too, the girls lost to Ry in the first game at home, at Ry, by two points, and their growth as a team over the course of the season's been astonishing. So congratulations to the girls and to Coach Cale.
Yes, congratulations. The boys' basketball defeated Woodland 61-51 in the Dabber McDonald Classic. Joe Croupy had 19 points, five assists, five rebounds. Croupy was also named MVP. Joe Jokai contributed to the win with 12 points and six rebounds, and the boys head into their final week of their regular season before the section playoffs. One super exciting Low-Hud Player of the Week announcement, Joe Croupy was named Low-Hud Boys Basketball Player of the Week for his performance in games during the week of January 23rd through January 27th.
Super.
We also had a freshman for Low-Hud Wrestler of the Week. Sienna Kuzali participated in the first ever girls wrestling state championship, and Sienna wrestled the 94-pound weight class and finished second in New York State. So congratulations to Sienna.
That's great.
Yeah, we're very proud, wonderful, following your passion. The last match of the boys bowling, boys and girls bowling teams defeated Portchester by a score of seven-nothing. Congratulations to the sectional qualifiers for swimming for next week's championship. Jake Robinson qualified for sectionals in the 50 free. Aiden Grant qualified for the 200 free. Joe Calachopo, sorry if I'm butchering that, for the 500 free. And Mark, I guess, are they twins or brothers? Mark Calachopo, they're making me butcher it twice, for the 200 individual medley, and the 100 butterfly for Massimo Rialli for the 100 backstroke. In the relay events, Corby Lucas and Cohen qualified as well as individual qualifiers. So congrats to this swimming team. And in regards to wrestling as well, Carter or Beldon qualified for the section championship and will be competing next week in the 285-pound division.
Wow.
The cheerleaders will host their showcase at the Harrison High School on February 7th, that's tomorrow, at 7:00 PM for the community as they prepare to compete in the Nationals in Florida. Cheerleaders from the rec level to the varsity will perform as well, so we're wishing you guys best of luck.
Very well-attended event too, and very well-run by our group.
And the Ry Town Harrison Hockey Team defeated White Plains 10-4. That's a really high-scoring game, actually.
Yes, it is, for hockey, that's a, somebody had a hat-trick at 10-4.
Yes, and just as a reminder to everyone in the community, there is no school for students on Friday. We have Superintendent's Conference Day, so your teachers will be hard at work.
They will.
Continuing to improve their craft. So we'll enjoy a long weekend. And Dr. Wool?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kozak, and thanks to everybody for being here tonight on an off night. I, the community might be wondering why we're here on a Monday. We sometimes have availability problems, but we were able to get the board together tonight, and so we appreciate everybody making themselves available. As Mrs. Kozak just mentioned, Superintendent's Conference Day is coming up. Our PTAs will be sharing pretty soon some of the amazing things that your teachers will be studying and working with, but if you were to look at the pages and pages of course offerings, you would see that it's not only teachers that are going to be trained, but our custodians, our aides, our assistants, our clerical staff. We are a learning community, and we're all going to figure out how to get better at what we do. I'm most impressed by the emphasis on deepening our understanding and building out our IB program, and as you'll hear very shortly, the commitment to IB, particularly the primary years process, continues to thrive. And I just want to mention that Dr. Mulholland's done an amazing job of stewarding this application process, and we just learned that likely by the end of this school year, every one of our elementary teachers will have been trained by IB in how to implement the primary years program, and that's a credit to them and a credit to you, Lisa, thank you. Couple of other things, just really quickly. You may have heard that we will be having a presentation, a shared presentation between the high school and middle school PTAs, I've gotten some questions about it. It will focus on how to make yourself more knowledgeable as a parent of the plague of fentanyl. Really difficult problem for parents, sometimes kids are inadvertently being exposed to the drug through vaping pens and the like, but are two SROs, and our Students Assistance Council will be leading that, it's an important presentation, and I know an invitation went out to all of the middle and high school parents, so want to thank both Kim and Scott for getting on top of that and making sure people have the information that they need. I want to jump tonight, if I might, right into our presentation because it is pretty comprehensive, and before I do, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Wolverton, who reminds me all the time that while we say it's budget season in Harrison, do you want to finish the sentence?
It's always budget season.
It's always budget season.
Thank you for that, Dr. Wool. This evening is the first presentation of a few that we will have as we are working on developing our spending plan for the 23-24 school year. Tonight, we will hear from Dr. Wool, Tim Whipple, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Dr. Brian Ladwig, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And this evening, we will focus on, tonight is really the budget overview, and Dr. Wool will take us through his goals, his plan for this upcoming school year. And we have already had numerous meetings, administrators have been meeting, the Budget Committee, who I am joined by Dino Puccio and Samantha DeBurg. We've had a few meetings as well, and then next Monday, February 13th, will be our first Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. If you are interested in learning more about that, if you would like to join us, please call Tim Whipple's office and speak with Jane Kelleher. Her number is 914-630-3010, and she will take your information and will get that info to you so you can join us. But I think with that, I will just say that as we have for the past, I think it's 11 years now, in January, the board directed Dr. Wool and Mr. Whipple to put together a spending plan that keeps us within the tax levy cap. And so as per usual, we are planning to stay within the cap, and that takes a lot of work because there are a lot of factors that we have no control over that really affect our decision-making. So I think with that, Dr. Wool, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that very thoughtful introduction, and I apologize to the board because obviously so many of you have been here for quite a while, and some of what we are going to say tonight, you may have heard a few times, Mr. D'Alonso, a few times.
Yes.
Just saying a few times, meaning like 15 times.
About 15?
So.
Twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
With my PTA.
I was trying to think of another frame to put on this to make it understandable to the average person, and so the job that we undertake, and I say we, it's called the Superintendent's Budget Overview, but I have an extraordinary team of administrators that work with me, not just Lisa, Tim, and Brian, but the principals and the directors. It is an immense amount of work that we undertake, and the number of meetings that we've had just to get to this point, and the budget is certainly not finished, is quite daunting on the part of everybody, and they always just lean in, and I appreciate that. But a budget is sort of my attempt to predict the future. Indeed, the future is a very difficult thing to know, and we certainly don't use a crystal ball. What we do is the best research and homework that we possibly can to try to get to what it is we want. So I'll start very quickly with an overview of, how do you develop a budget in a school district? Well, many of you know that the tax levy cap is now almost a decade old, and it in some ways limits the amount of flexibility that a school board or superintendent has to make decisions, because we are yoked to certain formulas, and Tim will show you what those are soon. But our budgets are always designed to challenge the needs of students and develop long-term plans. We always try to limit program reductions and in some way to innovate, and that's hard within this tight constraint, but we're really going to do it. Many years ago, when this happened, we decided, we needed to find a new way to think about this because you can't add program when you'd like, and so the question is, how can you improve the quality of the experiences kids have in existing programs? And so we use that as our primary approach. We see your children as unique individuals, we want them to feel rigor in what is rigorous for them, we want those experiences to be personalized, and that requires a tremendous amount of flexibility on the part of what we do. Many people credit me with having a vision for our school district, which I take full credit for. What they don't understand, though, is that our vision is based on research. It's not my good idea or anyone's good idea, we look at what the research tells us is possible, and then we pursue it even when others turn away. And the result is a school district that has found a remarkable amount of success with every member of its student body. So the next idea is important for you to realize that language matters. When we talk about the achievement gap, we are really blaming kids. It's got nothing to do with their achievement, it has to do with whether or not they've been exposed or prepared. So we tend to think of this more as a knowledge gap. Some kids come ready to learn because they've had lots of rich experiences, some kids maybe not so much, has nothing to do with the child. So we always try to remember that it is our job to meet children where they are. That's what a school budget is about. Are we giving our teachers, we talked about Superintendent's Conference Day, our teachers among the finest trained teachers in the country, that's why they're able to do what I'm talking about right now, to differentiate so that each child feels as if they're getting what they need to succeed. So you will notice that our budget objectives don't change very much from year to year because we're not a flavor-of-the-month school district. We've been on a very long, methodical march to ensuring that every child can become the best version of themselves. And so the PYP implementation, for example, is just another attempt to make the experience for kids more coherent. That's what I mean by strengthening coherence of content and skills. So the language you hear in 12th grade is the same language you will hear in kindergarten. We don't believe in assessing children in one way on one test. We collect all kinds of data on children because, as we all know, kids show their strengths in multiple ways, and if you don't collect that evidence, you're going to be relying on a very narrow band. Lisa is right now engaged in some wonderful study group experience where teachers are deepening their understanding about what it means to collect multiple measures. I've mentioned the IB learner profile traits there because our job is to develop capacity in kids, to help them to think, not to tell them what to think, but to help them to think. So I often say to parents, who does not want their child to be caring and knowledgeable? These are hard ideals to argue against, and they undergird the premise of the IB program. And the last bullet is really an echo of our valuing of all kids. IB sets as its objective developing and acquiring knowledgeable and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. By seeing one another, we make the world a better place. Here are my budget goals. I'd like to say there's a lot new in there, but there isn't. But there are a lot of things in here that are critically important. One of the reasons we get the kind of results that we do is because we worked so hard at maintaining class size in all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and when Brian shares some of what we've been able to accomplish there, you will see how we have lived up to those expectations, but that remains our primary objective. And I want to remind the board that later on, we'll be talking about the future even down the road, and the ability for our maintaining of class sizes is to have available classrooms. And when we run out of classrooms, then we'll be increasing class sizes, and that might be out of our control unless we get out in front of it, we'll talk about it. I've already talked about strengthening the continuity of the experience, so we're going to continue supporting the DP program, which is the highest level, which is now in its 10th year, and completing its second five-year review, and has been reviewed by the IB and is recognized as one of the finest IB programs in the world, and the world's a pretty big place. We haven't gotten to Mars yet, but when we do, we'll do just fine there, too. We're also completing our fifth year of the Middle Years Program in that review, and you know the results there have been phenomenal, not only in terms of academic performance, but the experience of kids. I met with a group of seniors today who are advocating for keeping the high school graduation at the high school, but literally, they prepared a presentation, and they showed me the link to their presentation and the IB learner profile traits. So you see, Dr. Wool, we're knowledgeable and we're principled, and it was wonderful. And we are completing this very powerful experience for kids by implementing the primary years program, which is a little bit behind schedule, not because of anything we're not doing, but because of funding challenges that we will face in this budget cycle. As I mentioned earlier, Lisa has managed somehow miraculous to get everybody trained in a year. We also have had a challenge that you will see listed elsewhere, and it breaks my heart to talk about it because it is in some way a direct correlation to COVID. Kids who have emotional dysregulation suffered the most during COVID, and we're seeing more and more kids require outplacements because they can't be sustained successfully in our schools based on the programs that we have available. But this board knows, and they know our history is, our primary goal is to educate children in the schools in which they live, and the community in which they live. So we will be building a new special education program to try to address the needs of these kids and keep them here at LMK. We are very, very excited about everything we've done over the last several years to enhance experiences for kids in the summer. We've primarily focused in the last two years on getting them excited about learning and building community. The challenge that we will have going forward is, come 2024, these programs will have to be funded within the district's budget. Some of this is funded, but the vast majority has been supported by federal money, and so one of my goals this year is to see how much we can pick up, and over the next two years, cycle into providing more. And probably one of the most important things that we can do, the last bullet on this list links directly to the first bullet, maintaining class sizes. You will learn later that our community, because of the quality of its schools, is undergoing a tremendous amount of development across all parts of it, and it is going to create a tremendous influx, we believe, of students. In order to meet that demand and maintain the program we have, you will learn later that we are thinking about a bond referendum in the future. In order to prepare for that, to make sure that we minimize the impact on the taxpayer, we are going to recommend this year, I am going to recommend, if the board accepts, that we establish a capital reserve fund, which merely means that if we have a good year and we're able to do better than planned, we would take that money and set it aside to offset the future costs for any capital expenses. So those are my primary goals. Let me just go through some other things that are also essential and continue to exist in our budget. We have to meet all the mandates of every special education student. So if a child needs a service that he didn't have last year, we try to get out in front of that, all of that is considered in the first iteration of this budget, as well as ENL students, and we have seen an uptick in the number of ENL students who require services in our community. So those are in the base budget. Staff professional development here is probably one of the most essential parts of what we do. We professionally develop our teachers, and we continually research whether or not what we're doing is working. All of those pieces of our budget will remain intact at the same level, at least. If I had my ideal, I would do more because we need to advance training, but if we can just hold on through this difficult budget cycle to what we have, we think that that would be really important. The last bullet is a challenge for us because in order to be approved for the final phase of becoming a primary years program, you have to have a plan and finances in place to implement an elementary world language program. And Mrs. Egan and Dr. Mulholland have done a great job, they have every possible iteration. If we implement with one teacher, then two, three, four, five, whatever it's going to take, but we are working right now on building out a plan that Tim will be able to consider over multiple years to phase in. I will say to you that we will not be able to put people in place this year as part of this budget plan unless things go better than planned, in which case we would consider beginning it in its infancy. So was on my list, and it's still sitting there, but I'm not budgeting for it, but I just need to be transparent about that. I just wanted to highlight some of the things we did accomplish this past year. During COVID, I think we all became acutely aware of the need for quality air control in schools, and so we did an awful lot of really fine work in a very short period of time. We've air-conditioned Harrison Avenue Auditorium, the high school large gymnasium, the high school, what is known as the Rose Garden Wing, which will now be used to house our summer school, which is eight full classrooms. Many purchased classrooms in the new addition, the 5th grade wing and kindergarten wing. The Parsons Gymnasium, which was not originally on the list, but due to great management, we were able to get that done. The Preston Auditorium will be finished this spring. That's a lot of air-conditioned spaces for kids, and we have some other very optimistic things even coming up this summer. Some of the projects that we did, one of my favorite, most amazing projects that we've ever undertaken, and Mr. D'Alonso having four children gone through the Parsons School. Parsons is an interesting old building, it's kind of like Hogwarts, it's got multiple levels, and one of the challenges was, you walked into the building, you walked up two steps, you walked across a landing, you walked down two steps to get to the other side of the building. We were able to literally, in-house, drop the floors and make that one level, so that was a tremendous accomplishment that we were able to get in place, and it's made a huge difference in that school. We've done tile replacement throughout the district paving and ceiling. The LMK lobby has finally been completed, which now reflects the beauty that was done in the renovation in this part of the building. And we've had many, 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 many security upgrades, which we have gone into great detail in the past, I'm not going to do it tonight, but it includes cameras and software, better connections between and among our police department, just tremendous successes in this past year. Coming up, we have many big projects also on the docket. Parsons, which is our oldest school, 1898, I think, was built Parsons, which is our oldest school, 1898, I think, was built before unit ventilators existed. So the only way to get fresh air into the building was to open the windows, and then there was big old fans sometimes that would push air through the building. But we're going to be putting a new unit ventilator system in that building, which is going to make a tremendous difference in the quality of air in that classroom. It also may be able to cool the rooms as well, so we're excited about that. And that will also be funded by a combination of federal funds. Partial roof replacements in Harrison Avenue and the Purchase Elementary Schools, at that point, all of our roof repairs will be completed. Having said all the things I'd like to achieve, let me tell you some of the things that are standing in our way. The potential for rapid enrollment growth is a tremendous challenge. People don't understand that we are not like a township. We can't just pass a bond by raising five members or four members on this board to say, yes, let's do it. We have to put it out for voter approval. Once we have voter approval, we have to have plans drawn. Those plans have to be sent up to SED. They have to be approved. Those plans have to come back. They have to be approved by SED and then put on the street for bid. After the bid is done, the bid has to be awarded, and maybe two years later, you put a shovel in the ground. Two years after that, you have a building. So we have to get busy if we're going to deal with rapid enrollment growth. Energy, just like in your house, is costing a little bit more. I don't know if anybody's been noticing that. I got my Con Edison bill, and I about passed out. I live alone. I'm going to stop using lights. Transportation is likely to increase dramatically. We have a wonderful company, but unfortunately, law requires us to put it out for a bid, and we expect that the cost for transportation will go up substantially. We should have that answer in the very near future, but Tim needs to figure that out as he plans ahead, so it could as much as double. As you know, health insurance in our district is a point of pride for us. You'll hear more about it later, but it went up profoundly, almost six and a half points. So new costs. I already mentioned new special education middle school programs, the Primary Years Elementary Foreign Language Program, which likely won't happen. And Brian, who is at the forefront of recruiting teachers, noticed this year that as the teacher shortage has become more dire, we are hiring more experienced teachers away from other districts, and so the cost of hiring teachers at the inception of their career has grown a lot. Hard to account for. He does a really excellent job of trying to predict, based on availability and certification area, what those teachers will likely cost, but our expectations and our planning have had to go up substantially. Kind of covered some of this already, the concept of this lengthy approval process. We have to keep that in mind when we're thinking about what we are facing. You're going to hear some of the other things that are on our minds. What do we need? Well, we need more rooms. We have portable classroom structures in Preston and in Purchase that are well outside of their usable lifespan. So the Preston portables had a 10-year lifespan when they were built, and they're over 30 years old. They need to be replaced, and that school desperately needs new space. Purchase School had a growth spurt at one point, and we added these portables just as I was arriving, and they, too, need to be replaced. The high school and middle school STEM programs cannot really reach their full potential based on the rooms that were designed, in one case in the 70s and in another case in the 50s. So we need to make sure that we support the good work of our teachers and the interests of our kids by addressing those concerns. Last time the board was here, we heard this fun, phenomenal presentation about how our physical education program has induced more kids to become aware of wellness and fitness. Well, we have a high school of over 1,000 kids, and we have a fitness center that really can accommodate about 60 kids. So we need to address these things just from an instructional perspective. The most important thing is building new classrooms so we can be prepared when kids start showing up. However, as you know, sometimes those are the things that people see. The things that really make a building safe and healthy are the infrastructure upgrades, which are essential and will make up a part of any bond referendum we pursue. Every year, we do a lot of upgrades, whether it's lighting or plumbing, but we have a lot of electrical, water, sewer technology, and we have to replace the furnaces in five of our six schools. Those are big things, and we have many security improvements still on the docket. Having said all that, we are optimistic. We are optimistic. Our objectives for the coming year are to maintain what we have, particularly around class size, support those programs that I've identified, keep the Primary Years Program moving ahead, and hopefully develop a plan in the short and long term to implement the Primary Years World Language Program. But to give some context to this, I've asked Dr. Leydwick to sort of synthesize for us big picture, what we are experiencing in development, and his slides, the slides up there are going to be slightly different order than yours.
Thanks, Dr. Will.
Thank you, Brian.
The time we spend thinking really deeply about the instructional program, the quality of our teachers, the world-class professional development that's provided to them is also made possible in part by thinking really carefully about our class size averages. And we've been really conscientious about monitoring this very carefully. So what we wanted to share tonight is just a snapshot of class size averages as they exist today. The elementary level, K-5, we're at 19.9, and we've been in the 19.7, 19.8, 19.9 range for the last five or six years. The middle school, it's 20.7, and at the high school, 18.2. And teachers will be the first to tell you that to personalize learning and to be highly responsive to the needs of the learners in front of them, having favorable class sizes is essential, and that's something we're really committed to ensuring going forward as a part of next year's budget as well. One of the challenges that the district faces, it's a good news story in many ways because it says, among other things, that Harrison's a thriving community. We have a lot of interest from families to move here. We have interest, as indicated by developers, that have identified that Harrison is a really desirable place to live, and that means there are a number of projects underway. I'm sure if you spend any time driving through any of our neighborhoods in Harrison, you'll see projects underway, whether it's a one-family lot that's being now turned into a 2, 3, 4 family lot, or larger projects throughout the district as well. So we work very closely with a demographer that helps to try to project what impact we might see in the future as it relates to enrollment, and part of that involves studying data that we get from the town of Harrison. So we put together this slide to give you a sense of what we're trying to monitor and what our demographers are currently working through to try to better understand and project enrollment. So what you have here are the four zones that make up our four elementary catchment areas, and then you have three different levels of readiness in terms of projects in the community. We have certificates of occupancy that have been issued, and so these numbers that you see reflect the numbers of units in these different categories. So we have 151 units where there's a certificate of occupancy that's been issued, which basically means projects done, ready to have families move in. In some cases, families may have since already moved in with this CFO status in place. So 151 units that fall into that category. If you look to the middle column, there are no fewer than 600 building permits that have been issued. So these are projects that have been started at various stages of completion, some just breaking ground, others about to get their certificate of occupancy. But as you can see, 600 units, the largest number, of course, listed there in the Purchase catchment zone. And then on the right side of this chart, you see those that are under planning review. So these construction projects, even small residential projects, all the way up to the largest projects that we have in the town, go through a planning review process, and those that are under review right now actually constitute 1,113 units that haven't started construction but are on the horizon. Now, when we say unit, that could be a one-bedroom, two-bedroom. It could be a house that has five or six bedrooms. This doesn't show that data, but these are all potentially units that can host families that will have kids that will come to our schools. So when you do the total that you see on the right, 1,864 units that are in some state of either planning or construction or certificate of occupancy, and so being really intentional about studying this information as carefully as we can with demographers helps us. It's imperfect, but it helps us to predict the number of students that we may see coming to us, and we hope to share that information with the board as a part of the budget development process in the coming weeks. But as you can see, with these numbers, this is a complex task for our demographers. They've been at this work for months, and we hope that within the next couple of weeks, we'll have more information.
And just a point of observation, as somebody who's been superintendent for over 20 years, our trend is not similar at all to surrounding communities. In most places, enrollment is flat, development is down. Our enrollment is steady, and development is on fire. So we need to keep those two things in mind as we try to plan for the future.
To give a snapshot of some enrollment trends, migration enrollment trends, we've shared some data here. This shows, this slide shows the high school and the middle school.
Brian, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
On the last slide?
Yep.
When we say 1,864, is that single occupancy units, or it could be much larger developments in one CFO that are multiple families, right?
This isn't projects, this is units.
This is units.
Actual units, separate units.
Got it. So we're really looking at growth of 1,864 individual dwellings with families.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
And I think, Brian, the big number driving the Purchase Catchment basement is the Renaissance.
Yeah, the Renaissance Project, which is under planning review, is 763 units. We have Westchester Ave., that's 150 units, that's also under review. Westchester Park Drive is 450 units. That's actually in the building permit stage. Westchester Ave. has also 69 units, and in downtown, we've got the Avalon, which is 143 units in various stages of completion.
And just to state the obvious, even though we ask that it be presented by elementary zone, these could also be affecting the middle and high school at any moment in time. You don't know who's moving in, right?
That's right. But just to provide some context and some perspective on the history of our enrollment over time, this slide shows, the top line is our high school's enrollment over the last decade, and the lower line, the blue line, is the middle school's enrollment over the last decade. You can see 2002 sort of to the right side, that's the year we're in right now, 1,069 students at the high school, 824 at the middle school. And the projection that you see in the years that follow, 2023, '24, and then the last number is 2025, those are based on projected migration trends. So a migration trend really accounts for rolling students up from one prior grade to the next grade and graduating seniors. And it also tries to account by looking at a five-year average, how many students enter a grade and exit a grade, moving in and out of Harrison in that year. So we look at a five-year migration trend average, and that helps to predict the numbers that you see, the high school going up to its high watermark next year at 1,100, dipping a little bit to 1,057, and then back up again to 1,085. So as Dr. Will said, in some communities, enrollment is staying flat, but in many, dropping pretty dramatically. We're not seeing that. In fact, we're seeing some of our highest enrollment in the years to come. At the middle school, same similar trend line, as you can see, over the next few years, reaching a high watermark of 868 students at the middle school. Note, though, the comment at the bottom of the page, these projections do not include the impact of new construction in Harrison, and that's important to underline and highlight because the work that the demographers are doing will then inform the projections that are here. So these numbers could go up once those additional projections are included.
Can we just go back a step? The reason for the projected drop is because they're not yet embedding the new developments. And so if trends were to sort of average out as they expect them to, if nothing were to change, they would likely drop. The problem is, everything's going to change, and they're not considering that yet. You just saw 1,800 units that are going to be added to the housing stock over this period of time, and our experience has been that demographers do their very best, but large developments bring lots of kids. And we know from conversations with developers, from conversations with the planning board, and from conversations with the mayor, that the developers are saying they're moving here specifically for the schools, which is, as Brian said, it's a good news story, and it's also a challenge.
Well, I mean, I think, and this is a really important point, it's almost 1,900, not 1,800.
Yeah, that's right.
Even if you wanted to average out 0.5 per unit, that could be upwards of 900 kids, right? I mean, depending on how this plays out.
You never know.
We've been talking about very large numbers of children.
As everybody knows, it's a crapshoot, and it'll probably be somewhere between that and less, but... And the problem for us is you don't know where they're going to land or when they're going to land. You know, Brian, could you go back just a minute to the class size, the first slide? Because Brian feels a lot of these questions for me when parents say, well, that's not true, there's a class in my building of 23. Well, these are averages. We can't always make them land perfectly, but we've seen years in recent times where one grade level will be flooded, and suddenly we'll have to create a section. So when we think about the impact of a handful of kids, if you want class sizes at a grade level to be 22, and 11 fourth graders show up, well, that's a new teacher. That's a new section of kids. It's not so easy to say that X number of kids equals X number of teachers. If the division problem worked that way, it would be a lot easier, but it doesn't. And Brian will tell you that larger schools get a better balance, and the smaller schools with fewer sections or the smaller grade level always struggle. But I just want to make the point that don't be fooled by you need giant numbers to keep your class sizes because a significant push in one building could require one or even two teachers. Sorry to take you off task there.
At the elementary level, the story is also interesting to observe. So the top line that you see on this graph is Harrison Avenue School, currently at 556 students and projected over the next three years to go up to about 579. Parsons is, I guess, orange on the screen?
Yes.
452. Now here, projected to go down to 437, but again, this does not include the impact of new construction, right? So when we watch the Avalon or the Calvert Project or another one on Halsted Avenue where the M&amp;T Bank is, those are all projects, and the Playhouse, those are all projects that we anticipate will yield more students. The green line that you see is Preston, 356 currently, again, the projection to 327. Preston's a community right now that doesn't have a lot of large projects, the large building projects, but there's still some housing turnover and some redevelopment of properties throughout the community in West Harrison. The Purchase School, just by this migration data, sitting at 330 right now, up to 342. We just looked at the number of projects that are in the pipeline and currently being completed. There's no fathomable way that we'll only pick up 12 students at the Purchase Elementary School, right? So this is incomplete data, but it is what we have today. Obviously, we refine it as we get more information.
I think that's such a stark comparison you just made. To predict 12 kids against almost 1,000 units is almost ludicrous.
But you said earlier, because it's always good to clarify the data you're looking at, these migration trends don't take into account those new units.
Not at all.
That's right.
Right. And so how crazy is it that our demographers are actually... Because we can talk about the deltas of 8 and 12 being meaningful for us, but they're projecting study state in a community that's about to add 2,000 units to its base. I mean, we all have to look at the larger impact and understand that change is coming.
No question, and I think you hit on a critical point, and Brian and I puzzle with this constantly, and we've done a lot of due diligence. The demographers are highly qualified expert in their field, but they live within a formula.
That's right.
And the formula says this, but look over there, but the formulas... So our job, remember this predicting the future? If there's an elephant in your living room, my advice is pay attention to the elephant. Don't just admire the living room. So there's an elephant, and that elephant is, you know, pushing 1,900 units, and we think that means we need time to get ready for this. And Tim will be talking about this throughout the budget process, and it's one of his key proposals. It's under my budget, but why a capital reserve fund is so significant. Thanks, Brian, very much. Good job.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Dr. Will. So as indicated earlier, budget development is in full swing. You know, I'm constantly impressed with the level of thought and detail from all of our district administrators. It's really a pleasure to work with such a great group of professionals. I will say, all effort to develop a really sound educational and fiscally prudent plan is at work right now, so I'm happy to be a part of that. Not to say it's not going to be challenging, as it always is, and this year, it seems like it's even more challenging than it has been in the past, but we're up for that challenge. As Mrs. Wolverton indicated earlier, this is As Mrs. Wolverton indicated earlier, this is not our full budget tonight. This is just a kind of a sneak peek, a snapshot of what we're looking at. This type of year, or this time of year, we like to give the board some budget development FYIs that kind of gets you in tune with some of the things that we're looking at. Again, as we, as Mrs. Wolverton indicated, the budget committee has met and they've gone through a lot of these things already, so this will be a little bit of a recap for the others. A couple of the main factors that I look at, you've heard me talk about this before, but there are two of my biggest, kind of my biggest things with respect to the revenue we can generate, is the tax-based growth factor and the Consumer Price Index. And these are two metrics that you'll, that you'll see more in a minute as we talk about the tax levy limit calculation. But, the tax-based growth factor is an important number because it gives an indication of the residential and the commercial development in the community. So, as you, as Brian just said, and as you can see, you know, with your own eyes, we have, we have a great deal of development. .64 is the, is the growth factor for Harrison in the upcoming year, which is a good number. I will say that that, if you look at all the other school districts in the county, every school district has their own growth number. Ours is at the middle to the high end of what we're seeing regionally. So, that's a very good factor. The town and village of Harrison, ironically enough, has the same growth factor that they will use in their budget this year. The second thing that I look at is the Consumer Price Index, and this is an important metric because it generates an additional amount in our tax levy calculation that we can depend on to help support the budget next year. So, the law says that the district cannot raise their levy by more than 2% or the CPI, whatever's lesser. So, unfortunately, the 12-month change is 6.4, so that's an indication of inflation, right? So, we know prices have gone up, but the maximum allowable growth for us is 2%. So, this is helpful and concerning at the same time. Obviously, when our maximum allowable growth is 2%, yet, energy is rising at a faster pace, health insurance is rising at a faster pace, we're only allowed to raise the levy by 2%. This is a challenge for us, as you could probably imagine. The positive part of, of the, of the inflationary numbers we're seeing are, with our income, our investment income is vastly outperforming what we had budgeted, which is a good sign. Sales tax numbers are up from the county. The sales, the county of Westchester shares their sales tax earnings with us and all school districts. We find that the amount of money that we're receiving from sales taxes is up because people, because prices, prices are up right now. People are spending and prices cost more. So, those two factors are, are major calculators of our revenue for next year. On the expenditure side, we look at, obviously, we're in the people business, so the majority of our costs are salaries and benefits for employees. The two major retirement systems that our employees belong to, the employer retirement system, the teacher retirement system, those two things will kind of even themselves out next year, so it won't have a big impact on our budget. You can see the TRS rate is down slightly from the current year and the ERS rate is up slightly from the current year. So, those are things that we will be taking into consideration. As Dr. Will mentioned earlier, the health insurance plan, which, which historically has been very reasonable in terms of increases, last year it was 1.5%. This year, we're looking at an 8% increase. Unfortunately, that translates for us about $1 million of additional health insurance costs, which is very, very significant when you think about the maximum amount that we're allowed to raise in our taxes. Having said that, I would rather be in our plan than the state plan because the state plan in many districts around us belong to the state health insurance plan. It's called NISHIP. That plan is going up 14%. So, this is a major budget buster for a lot of our colleagues and you'll hear more about this as we move down the line this year. I won't spend any more time on this, but Dr. Will said, transportation, special education, tuition, those are factors that we are looking at. We're actually opening our bids for our transportation contract this coming Friday, so we're interested to see. We're at the end of our five-year period and we'll be very curious to see what, what the bids come back at. So, we're optimistic and hopeful that we're going to be able to, to deal with that. So, on the revenue side, we'll talk really briefly about the executive budget proposal. Governor Hochul, last week, on February 1st, released her preliminary budget. And what we found was very interesting, the, the foundation aid formula, which is what the major aid formula for all school districts, saw an increase of, a proposed increase of $2.7 billion, which I believe is one of the largest single-state increases for public education in our history. And I know the board knows a lot about the foundation aid formula, so I'm not going to go into it, but basically, this was a true-up of the amount of money that needed to be funded for schools that was promised to them a long time ago. So, this year, I should say, in the 23-24 school year, the governor has made good on her promise and they, districts will be fully funded for the first time in New York State history in terms of the foundation aid formula.
Now, the only thing I will add to that is it's going to perhaps create confusion community to community. So, I just want to take a second to explain foundation aid and why it actually makes sense, even though we're not getting a lot. This was a lawsuit brought by a professor slash attorney on behalf of poor children in the state of New York, who said that every poor child should be entitled to a sound, basic education, and they set a floor. At that point, I think it was like 80, 500 bucks. They won that lawsuit in the state of New York and then never paid it off. And the last governor that tried to pay it off was Governor Spitzer and then he exited quickly and it never got paid off under Governor Cuomo. And so, this is actually finally meeting the basic obligation to pay those districts that were getting less aid than they were entitled to, pay them back. And so, Tim is right to remind us that while we didn't get a lot of aid, we are in a save harmless category, so we're getting, in some cases, some would say, I don't agree, more than we're entitled to based on the formula. And so, it is important to know that the seeming windfall some districts are getting is payback for 25 years of being in arrears.
Yeah, and real quickly, you know, somebody might ask, "Well, how does the state determine who is entitled to foundation aid and which ones are not?" As Dr. Will said, Harrison, we're looking at about $100,000 increase. So, the state uses two metrics, property wealth and income wealth, to generate what the amount is for foundation aid. So, when you look at the New York State average for income per pupil, which is about $323,000 per pupil, Harrison's per pupil income for our residents in the community is 1.1 million. So, you can see right off the bat, in terms of income, we're, we far exceed what the state average is. In terms of property wealth per pupil, so this is the assessed value of your homes, the New York State average is $780,000, and again, in Harrison, our property wealth per pupil is about 1.9 million. So, when you average those two things together, you can see pretty quickly why we are probably at the lower end of any increase that would be projected for state aid.
And just by way of comparison, Rye City School District's in the same boat, Scarsdale is in the same boat, Chappaqua, Byram Hills, all of those schools are in this save harmless category based on income and total assessed value in their community.
Exactly. So, just a kind of an interesting metric and to kind of determine what kind of money we're talking about here. So, those, those districts in Westchester County who are not yet fully funded, now, Harrison's fully funded, so those who are not fully funded will see an average increase of about 34% year-over-year in foundation aid, which translates to about $3.6 million. Now, I took Yonkers out of it because Yonkers increase is way exceeds that, so that, that kind of messes with the, with the average. So, I took that one out, but the other 39 districts can see an average of 30, $3.6 million. So, you can see what kind of money we're talking about. You know, I'm not saying those districts aren't going to have challenges this year, but their challenges are going to be more easily met based on the increase in foundation aid, whereas Harrison's increase of only 100,000, you know, we're going to be struggling to try to meet some of our obligations this year. I will say on a positive end, you know, we have done some things over the past few years to try to generate aid where we can. And a couple of those areas are called BOSI's aid and building aid, and basically, these are expense-driven aids where the more you spend, the more you're reimbursed. So, as the board knows, we've started to try to push more things to BOSI's to receive some of this reimbursement. The district is coming off our 2016 bond where we have finalized all of our capital projects, so that building aid is starting to generate, so we're able to use that in our budget to help offset some of the expenses. So, those are good signs and will be positive news for us as we move forward. So, the next piece is the tax levy limit, and I know the board has seen this at nauseous, I'm not going to go through each line here, but I want to highlight two of the major factors, which are highlighted in blue. And again, you've heard me talk about this, I'm sure, many times, the tax-based growth factor and the allowable CPI growth, both in blue. So, starting off, our current year levy is $116 million. That's the total amount we collect from the taxpayers in the current year, in the 22-23 year. So, right off the bat, the, the state of New York allows us to increase the levy by a tax-based growth factor, which again, indicates the level of assessment increase in our community between the 2020 and the 2021 tax years. So, again, that number is .64. That generates for us about $744,000 right off the bat, just because our, of the, of the, of the growth in assessments in our community. The second piece, again, we talked about this, is the CPI growth. This is the lesser of 2% or the CPI. Remember, the CPI is 6.4%, but unfortunately, in the state's formula, we are only allowed to increase the allowable growth for the CPI by 2%. So, helpful, but not as helpful as it would have been had we been able to levy enough to keep up with the inflationary figures that we're seeing. So, again, 2% for us generates about 2.2 million. So, if you add the tax-based growth factor of 740,000 with the 2.2 million, that's basically 300 mil, or $3 million in new money that we're able to generate to help support the budget next year. One last thing I want to just bring to your attention is the, a new pilot that we're going to receive next year. Morgan Stanley, as you may have heard, has been issued a pilot by the Westchester County IDA. So, that means that we will receive additional income from Morgan Stanley directly instead of them paying a regular tax bill. So, that'll increase our pilot payments. That has, unfortunately, has a negative effect on our tax levy limit, but it does mean that Morgan Stanley will be sending a payment directly to the district next year, which will help offset any negatives. So, all in all, we're looking at a total maximum tax levy increase next year of 1.79%. That generates about $2 million, but when you add in the Morgan Stanley pilot payment of about 1.4 million, you can see the, the total allowable kind of new money or increase in revenue will be about 3.4, 3.5 million dollars. So, when you think about all of our expenses of 130 million dollar budget, you know, we have salaries, we have benefits, we have transportation, we have special education costs, all of those things need to fit within that 3.5 million dollar increase. And that's the struggle that we're going through right now and we're trying to work out as we finish our budget development process. Any questions about the tax levy limit before we move on?
No, Tim. Only to balance the, while the pilot payment in, it's only an equalization of what we have to take out on the other pages. So, it really isn't $3.5 million. It really is $2 million with an equalization of a million and a half after we had to bring it down from this year's pilots.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, it's a net neutral provision.
It's a net neutral, yeah. So, we're really, if you really want to think about $2 million against the budget in terms of growth, that's really what we're talking about when you look at this year-over-year.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Dr. Will, do you want to start off with this real quick?
Sure. I will go quickly. I kind of talked about this at the outset. So, the budget is a plan for a year, but as we have talked about tonight, we need to plan longer than a year. And so, part of this budget is the beginning of a new strategic initiative to try to position the district and the taxpayer to build and refurbish, expand our building footprint without negatively impacting the taxpayer to the extent possible. And so, as part of our plan, you will be asked to vote on two things this year, a budget and the authorization to create what is called a capital reserve fund. And really, what that means is if we do better than planned in any place within the budget and we have extra, excess funds, I don't like that word excess, but we just did better than planned, what would we do with those funds? Well, this would give us permission up to a certain limit to put them in a reserve and that reserve can only be used to create opportunities to pay for capital expenditures and only if the public approves it. So, the next slide is kind of, why do it? And there's exactly what I just said. You see how good my memory is? It does not add to your taxes, so it's not a new tax, it's just a place to put money in the, in the event we do better than planned. It can only be used by voter approval to offset capital improvements, nothing else. Really, got to be clear. It could reduce future capital costs because if you have to borrow less, you pay less. If your interest rate is lower or shorter duration, you pay less. And as Tim points out, many districts have used it to reduce taxpayer outlay for capital projects all around us. It's fairly common.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when, when I see what's coming, and we all see what's coming, Brian did a great job of introducing what we believe to be, you know, a huge increase in enrollment. One of the things we look at is, you know, how can we, how can we accomplish these goals with as little impact to the taxpayer in terms of our facility as we possibly can? And that's one of the things that I, I look at with the advantages of a capital reserve because, you know, one mechanism that's very popular and permitted by New York State is the establishment of a capital reserve fund. And as Dr. Will just indicated, the district is allowed to set aside money for future construction projects, just much like a savings account, with the ultimate goal of really minimizing the financial impact of projects in the future. And that's the ultimate goal here that we're trying to achieve. Where does the money come from? Well, the money is only added to the capital reserve fund at the end of the fiscal year upon board resolution, I might add. The board has to authorize us to transfer monies of unexpended savings into the capital reserve if we do better than planned. So, obviously, you know, we have a, we have a budget every year. We try to meet all the needs of our educational students. However, we would like to operate in a profit. We don't want to operate in a deficit because that means we're using fund balance. So, in the event that we do operate in a, in a profit, those monies, rather than be used to pay for ongoing expenses, we can transfer those to the capital reserve and use them for one-time future capital expenses. So, that's the ultimate.
I would just amend it and say, operating in a surplus, not in a profit. Because nothing we do here is a profit.
That's right, we're a nonprofit. But, you know, a simple example for people to get their heads around, I mentioned transportation, which is a big item for us. Well, if we bid other projects and we plan as best we can, but somehow we get a more competitive bid, or we're able to, to complete the project with less expenditure, that's money that at the end of the year, if it's still available, could be authorized by the board to be placed in this capital reserve so that we could use it to offset future expenses against another capital expenditure.
Exactly. You know, some people ask, "Well, will my taxes go up if we establish a capital reserve?" The answer is no. We were not asking taxpayers to levy any more tax in order to support the capital reserve. We're simply accruing a balance at the end of the year if the district finds efficiencies or realize unexpected savings, which is the goal. What kinds of projects can the money be used for? Well, the, the great thing about a capital reserve is that there's a lot of flexibility the board and the taxpayers have to use for capital projects. Building additions, which is what we're talking about, if we have additional students coming into the district, we need to be able to add on to our buildings. We need to replace boilers. We have renovations to STEM spaces. We have renovations to fitness centers. The capital reserve will only be used with voter approval and the board's dissent and ultimately decided on by the community through a public referendum. So, the taxpayers have, are very well protected because they can establish how much will go into the reserve and then what the amounts are used for at the conclusion. So, how can this help save taxpayer dollars? Well, obviously, the less money you have to borrow, the less interest costs that will accrue over time. You can, you can just imagine that as, as your primary home, when you put down a larger down payment on your home, it's less interest that you're going to have to pay over the, over the series of, of the life of the, of the mortgage or the debt service. So, that's the same exact idea here. We would take any monies that would accrue to the capital reserve, use them to help pay down debt over time, and again, minimize the amount of interest and help save thousands of dollars in interest costs over the length of a 15- or a 20-year repayment schedule. So, again, that's kind of the capital reserve in a nutshell. We will have more information on this as we move through the budget process, but... We will have more information on this as we move through the budget process, but this is one of the things that we believe is in our interest, and will serve both the district and the taxpayer as well as we move forward towards what seems to be an eventual capital project in the near future. So just to wrap up, today, we're talking about, obviously, the superintendent's budget overview. On March 15th, really, is when we get into the nitty-gritty and talk about our budget priorities, projected expenditures. That'll be on March 15th, so about a month from now. And then on March 29th, we'll talk about revenues, tax implications, fund balances. So that's what you have in store for the next couple of meetings, and with that, we'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board? Lyndy, anything you want to add?
No.
And we know that was long, but there's a lot in there for you to digest. We hope the community appreciates that we're trying to create both a short-term and a longer-term approach to the extent possible. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Tim. Thank you, members of the board, for your kind attention. That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening. Hand it back to you, Madam President.
Thank you all. Extremely thorough. So moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Three, extra compensation appointment. Four, leave of absence without pay. Five, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Two, change of status. C, other. One, student/teacher/observer. Two, contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. I would, moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School 12th graders to Albany, New York for the Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. B, acceptance of gift from the Friends of Harrison Baseball. C, acceptance of donation from Tony Tashara. D, adoption of policies, number 7510, School Health Services, number 7511, Immunization of Students, and 7512, Student Physicals. E, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. F, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to thank the Friends of Harrison Baseball for their generous gift. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
I think you missed, um...
Oh, did I?
No, you just, I know you meant to thank Tony Tashara for the donation.
Oh. And yes, another comment. Thank you for your generous donation, Tony Tashara. Sorry about that, and thank you.
That's okay. I just can't help but be moved by Enzo DeTaro, anybody that knew her, the scholarship and her honor. She was quite a force in the PTA and just a lovely human being, and we're so sorry that she lost her fight with cancer. Great memorial on her behalf.
Thank you.
One of our equity warriors.
Yes, she really was.
Moving on to the Finance and Facilities Report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, resolution to declare lead agency status and adopt a Type II action under SICRA for roof renovations to Harrison Ave Elementary School. B, resolution to declare lead agency status and adopt a Type II action under SICRA for roof renovations to Purchase Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve the finance? Oh, wait. Sorry, sorry.
I was going to say, don't we have?
Disregard C, there was a big gap. Contract for Health Services, Dobbs Ferry Union Free School District. D, resolution to appoint a volunteer driver. E, contract for Health Services, Mamaroneck Union Free School District. F, 2022-23 appropriation transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments?
Just two. So excited to be able to get that roof work finally done. That's what you're just putting in motion. I also want to, again, single out and thank Allison Blunt, who always goes above and beyond to support her kids. We recognize tonight the science research finalists that are going to be competing in Albany. Well, one of them is Ariel Blackman, who has to get to the Albany Airport in time to get to the Regeneron competition, and so Allison is not only accompanying the kids, but she's going to drive her from that competition to the airport so she can make her flight. So the kind of commitment and support we see from our teachers is just moving. Reminds me of the great story we heard of Nick Reed's signing.
Yes.
Nick Reed was, had to take his English Regents on the day of his kicking competition, and Kelly Malchesky, who's from the region, arranged for him to take an English Regents in her high school so he could do both. So personalization in our budget presentation is real. Thank you, Harrison teachers.
Yes, thank you for that anecdote. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report? Or, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will be March 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.